Whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the meaningful connections and partnerships created between child welfare, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, and law enforcement agencies, and volunteers, communities must make every effort to encourage volunteerism and promote programs and activities that benefit children and their families. Whereas court-appointed special advocates CASA volunteers are assigned by the court to speak up for a child's best interest and help ensure a child's voice is heard, every child in foster care deserves a CASA volunteer, but roughly less than half the children in care do not have a CASA volunteer. And whereas CASA of the Sabine-Natures Region, Child Protective Services, Child Advocacy Centers, foster parents, teachers, and others work to ensure that children in our community have a safe and happy future, now therefore I, Mayor Larry Spears Jr., will hereby proclaim April 2021 as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month in the City of Orange and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Thank you.
I won't take too much of your time. My name is Cody Voskus. I'm the Executive Director of CASA Sabine-Natures Region, and it's a pleasure to be here to bring this awareness to you. Now, we're nearing the end of April, and April is the time that we try to become very public about child abuse prevention and awareness. However, it is something that we work toward year-round. I have a few numbers for Orange County. I get these numbers from the Department of Family Protective Services. They do not break them down by city, but in Orange County, there were 1,046 cases investigated for abuse and neglect. This is last year in 2020. There were 281 confirmed cases of abuse and neglect. 103 children were removed from their home, and 283 children were in state care. Of the 283, 85 of those children had a CASA volunteer. So as you can see, there's still a lot of work to be done. We need the community. We need volunteers. It is our goal to provide a CASA for every child. We did hold a vigil at the courthouse. The weather wasn't too great earlier this month, and we expect to do that every year. You may have seen the pinwheels planted at the courthouse garden. Those represent the 251 children that lost their lives in the state. We did lose four children in our service area. CASA Sabine-Natures Region serves Orange, Harden, Jasper, Newton, Tyler, and Sabine Counties. One of those children was a Sabine County resident, one was a Harden County resident, and unfortunately, two of those were Orange County residents. And one of those was from the City of Orange. So we will keep doing what we're doing until there's no more pinwheels to plant, no more vigils to be had, and I'm out of a job. So thank you for your time. I would just like to remind you, if you suspect abuse, report it. You don't have to investigate. You don't have to know the facts. There's people to do that for you. If you have a suspicion, report it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you.
On to Item 7A, City Announcements, City Staff Announcements, and City Events. Mr. Coons?
Mayor, Council, and the public, just want to let y'all know about the announcements that we'll have on Saturday in regards to our municipal election. First, I'd say, remember that the Orange County Election Administrator Office, they handle our city elections for us. So on Saturday, almost after the polls close at 7:00 PM, the early voting results will be released to the media. And I'm going to kind of say what's going on with our city secretary here in just a second. Then later on Saturday evening, after the polls have closed and all the polling locations have returned, their election materials and ballots to be counted electronically, the Orange County Elections Administration again will announce the results via email to a variety of people, such as the local media and the other folks like the city secretaries. Our city secretary, Ms. Tricia and Jennifer, they'll be giving the results for the City of Orange elections. Then they're going to return, so they're meeting at their office, the Orange County office. So when they get the results from our elections, she has to go back to City Hall. They have to go back to City Hall where she, and I'm going to tell you, she's going to verify all that stuff, you know, and make sure it's in her form, and then she's going to email the results to the candidates, to the council, to senior staff, local media. So, and that's going to be the same result. So those of you who are interested in getting it just as soon as you can, pay attention to your local media, you know, KOGT, Orange Leader, KFDM, wherever you get your news. And I miss some of the news sites. They're good news sites, too. But again, so the reason that we will not be in, city manager and candidates and council won't get that from Tricia immediately is because she's going to have, she's going to have to go back to City Hall and send that stuff out from her computer. So again, we told the folks there at the Orange County, go ahead and send that out. So also, the early voting results, again, they're going to send that out, the county's going to send that out almost immediately after 7:00. So again, it's going to take a little while for our folks to do that. Again, our city secretary, our city secretary is going to email the results. We have been advised not to text anything, so there's not going to be any texting. It's all going to be through email. So again, you may learn the results on local media, and you may ask why, but that's why. That's it. I don't think any of the other staff has any announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Coons. On to Item 8, Ordinances, First Reading. Consider an ordinance amending the adopted budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2020, and ending on September 30th, 2021, in accordance with the Charter of the City of Orange, Texas. Ms. Zito.
Yes, Mayor. This is our semi-annual process to, for the council to approve our budget amendments and our line item transfers. Just to remind you, a budget amendment is when we need to increase our budget for either revenue or expenses that, and that will come, either come from reserves or add to reserves if it was a revenue. A line item transfer is just moving money around within a department, like from, say, office supplies to maintenance expense. So line item transfers happen all year-round just to adjust our budgets, but council has to approve our budget amendments twice a year. On page 30 is my recap of the budget amendments for this year, or for this first half of the year. The general fund is increasing the budget, which is coming from reserves, $685,000. Now, that sounds like a lot of money coming from our reserves, but what it's doing is any projects that weren't completed last year, POs, things that didn't get paid for, that sort of thing. Part of it was some of our capital improvement projects. If they didn't get completed at the end of the last fiscal year, we have to roll them to the new year, and this is how we do it. So, let's see, general, the capital projects fund, $134,000, same thing. It was moving projects forward. Now, the water and sewer fund, they are using reserves, about $286,000, but they've had a whole lot of unexpected repairs to make, breaks, that sort of thing. So our water and sewer department has had to use some of their reserves. On page 31 through 35 is just more detail of all of those. I just break them out per department, and I give an explanation for every single one in case anybody has questions. And then after that, on page 36 through 51 is a printout from our software that shows every budget amendment, every line item transfer that we have processed up until this point in time. And so I request that you make, do you approve this ordinance to adjust our budget.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Pulling?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. On to Item 9, Resolutions, Final Reading. Consider a resolution approving an EDC infrastructure grant agreement with Luigi's Italian Grill, Armand Hajarri, 3108 Edgar Brown Drive, Orange, Texas, in an amount not to exceed $139,000. First reading was April 13th, 2021. Mr. Trahan.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the last step in the public approval process. We've observed an EDC public hearing previously. We've observed a 60-day waiting period while we actually formulated the EDC reimbursement grant agreement. So just to remind you, and I know many of us in here have visited the new Luigi site in the City of Orange, which is a beautiful project. It has the feel of a brand-new building when you walk in, because basically it is. The owner basically committed to a $464,000 capital investment, of which the EDC is participating at $139,000 for new roofing, the commercial vent hood, kitchen equipment upgrades, and the HVAC system. So this is the final reading. This basically concludes the final public approval process for us to actually execute the agreement. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Are there any questions from council?
I don't have a question, but I would like to say something. I went by there and spoke with the owner, and he's one of the most appreciative persons I've ever seen. He's so grateful for the City of Orange helping him. He was in tears. And he left such an accommodation and recommendation of perfectness for Jay. And I can't thank Jay enough for that, because, you know, Jay knows his business. He goes out and works it and helps these people, and they don't forget it. So we have an awesome restaurant. It is beautiful. I encourage you to go look in it.
Jay, wasn't his, wasn't his restaurant damaged during the storm?
Yes, it was severely damaged.
I thought it was. So that's great. He was able to have, you know, there's some hope there, you know? And so that's wonderful. I'm so glad that we didn't lose him as a, as a, you know, a business owner. So that's wonderful. That's wonderful. I thought he did.
Any other comments? Okay? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Pulling?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. On to Item 9B, Consider a Resolution Approving an EDC Infrastructure Grant Agreement with Bayou Metal Specialties LLC, 1813 Dupont Drive, Orange, Texas, in an amount now to exceed $150,000. Mr. Trahan.
Okay, so Mayor and Council, as we discuss this project, a couple of special features about it. The capital investment is estimated right at $400,000. We're looking at building upgrades, remodels, and yet again, a new HVAC system based on $150,000 EDC incentive. And I think one of the things that makes this project special is it's located in Cove in the City of Orange, and basically, this is the third project that the city has embarked upon in Cove. Cove School demolition, that's green space now, Torva Performance Marine that you're familiar with, that's currently under construction, and then now, a third project in Cove. So I think it really makes it special for us to be able to land this project. And so this is the first reading that will take us two weeks from now in terms of doing one more reading, and then we'll be able to execute the agreement, and then the project owner will be able to work through the construction part of the project. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Are there any questions from council?
Just excited to have some things going on in the Cove. It's really great.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pulling?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. On to Item 9C, Consider a Resolution Approving an EDC Infrastructure Grant Agreement with Columbus Motorsports LLC, Van Hughes Properties LLC 3500, IH10 West Orange, Texas, in an amount not to exceed $250,000. Mr. Trahan.
So Mayor and Council, yet another very special economic development project. I think most of us have driven Interstate 10 westbound near Tejas Parkway, and we've seen the amazing progress that is being made right now, which was formerly a vacant building. A couple of highlights about this project, $1.4 million in terms of the capital investment that will go toward building repairs, remodels, extensive electrical upgrades, and yet, a new HVAC system with a economic development incentive in the form of a reimbursement grant at $250,000. So as we're discussing this third project, just to kind of circle it around, what we've looked at tonight is a total capital investment of $2.3 million in the City of Orange and $539,000 in EDC incentives to help with these businesses in terms of their capital investment. So I'll answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, any questions from the council? Okay, I'll make a comment. This is the last one for us to approve, the new businesses. And as we spoke about earlier in the EDC, for those who may not understand exactly what the EDC does, we take hotel motel tax funds, and we use those to help bring in new businesses and establish infrastructure that will allow the citizens and the community to enjoy themselves. And so to look out and to see over $2.6 million incurred and already in action, especially with what you've just talked about now, I do believe, as I stated before, these are the answered prayers that we have been waiting for. These are the things that we have been working hard for, and I want to thank each and every member of council staff and the EDC, because this is just the beginning. This is only the beginning, and I think there's greater is to come.
And Mayor, if you don't mind respectfully, I would just like to clarify, the hotel motel tax fund isn't available fund to us, but for these projects, it's the restricted 10% sales tax that was used for it. So just, just to clarify from a public perspective, but you're exactly right. Without this funding that's available to us in this form of 10% sales tax, it would be very difficult for these projects to make their numbers work. But thank you, Mayor, for those comments.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pulling?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Jay? On to Item 9D, Consider a Resolution Reaffirming Ordinance 1996-6, Providing for Homestead Exemptions and Add Forlawed Property Taxes for the Taxable Year 2021. Ms. Zito.
Yes, Mayor. Every year, the council, or in the past years, the council has approved a homestead exemption for its citizens. This resolution is to reaffirm that original ordinance and to continue to provide the homestead exemption currently. It's at 20%, not less than $5,000 of an appraised value, and $15,000 for 65 and older and approved disabled.
Okay.
We'll make a motion.
We'll make a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pulling?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. On to Item 9E, Consider a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into an Agreement with Arsenale Wilson &amp; Cole for an Amount Not to Exceed $26,545 for Professional Engineering Services for the Sunset Park Water Line Replacement Project. Mr. Wolf?
Yes, Mayor and Council, thank you. We'd like to push forward with some funding that we had budgeted for this year, and the first step is to spend it towards our water system improvements, some rehab of some very much-needed water line replacement in the city. This is an area, we call it Sunset Park Water Line Replacement, but actually, it's an area defined by, from 16th Street to Bob Hall, from Barkins to Cardrey. So it's a, it's a, it's a big neighborhood. And what we want to do is to replace existing 2-inch and smaller lines with 6-inch and 4-inch lines. And the 6-inch lines, we will add fire hydrants in several different locations. So the first step to get this project kicked off, though, is to hire an engineer. And so I went out for proposals, and I received one, received several, but I recommend that we award the engineering design for this segment of water line to Arsenale Wilson &amp; Cole, local engineers that I've used before.
Jim, how old are, are infrastructures mostly?
Oh, gosh. It varies. 75, 50 to 75 years old.
All right, I'll make a motion.
That's second.
Can we have a motion and a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pulling?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. This is something that we appreciate you working on. We know it's taken some time to get to this, because we've had you filled up with a lot of other projects, but for those who may not know or think that we have neglected the water lines that needed to be replaced, I appreciate you bringing that to us tonight.
Sure.
Okay. On to Item 9F, Consider a Resolution Awarding a Contract to DCD Construction in the Amount of $66,950 for the Radio Read Meter Change Out Project for Fiscal Year 2021. Mr. Wolf?
Yes, Sir, Mayor. Council, this is something that we do annually. We budget for a certain number of radio read meters each year in an effort to try to totally replace all of our meters in the city. We read about 8,000 meters. And so this contract, this particular contract, using our budgetary funds, we allow about $125,000 each year for meter replacement, maintenance and replacement. We purchase the meters ourselves, and then we go out for bid for the installation of the meter. And we received only one bid this, this year. It's in line with our estimate and our budgetary funding. It's a local firm. It's a firm from the City of Orange, DCD Construction. We've not done business with them prior, but we've checked the references, and we've checked the experience, and we trust that they can do the work. They'll be bonded, and we recommend award to the local firm.
I'll make a motion.
Can we have a motion and a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pulling?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, sir. On to Item 10A, Discussion and Action. Consider a motion approving action taken by the Orange EDC in the form of a motion of intent approving an EDC incentive for Team Elevate LLC at 823 Henderson Avenue, Orange, Texas, for eligible infrastructure improvements in an amount not to exceed $95,000 for the purpose of economic development. Ms. Dallas?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So I know earlier we were speaking about some EDC projects that have been some rehabilitated buildings in the City of Orange that are now going to, in the process of being thriving businesses once again. The two projects that we're speaking about today are actually new buildings in the City of Orange, so we are lucky and very blessed to be able to do both. The one we're speaking of right now is Team Elevate. Team Elevate is a $298,000 investment. The second building, excuse me, so the first building that they have, they offer ABA therapy, speech pathology, many other services like that, and unfortunately, there is such a high demand for everything that they have outrun their building. They've purchased this right next to it, and the rendering is to my left of what it's going to look like. They are going to offer the same services with additional services that they do now. The infrastructure improvements that the EDC, or we're asking you to approve, that the EDC approved a motion of intent on earlier, are concrete framing, electrical work, and the sheetrock of this new building in an amount not to exceed $95,000. We're asking now that you approve that motion of intent. We move forward with the 60-day waiting period for the development agreement to be drafted.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pulling?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Dallas. On to Item 10B, Consider a motion approving action taken by the Orange EDC in the form of a motion of intent approving an EDC incentive for Red Plaza LLC, 2948 16th Street, Orange, Texas, for eligible infrastructure improvements in an amount not to exceed $78,000 for the purpose of economic development. Ms. Dallas?
Mayor and Council, same stands for this project, Red Plaza LLC. This is a new structure in the City of Orange. It's on 16th Street. The Reds Liquor is currently there, and the two lease spaces to the left will be added, and that's what they are asking for, the reimbursement, the infrastructure assistance for the reimbursement for that part of the project. So essentially, in turn, in helping this one building, we're helping two new businesses able to come to the City of Orange and have an office space for them to lease or storefront. The addition, the capital investment that he's looking at making, is about $217,000. They are asking for an infrastructure reimbursement from the EDC for concrete framing and plumbing of these two lease spaces to the left, and they're, the motion of intent that was approved by EDC early, earlier this evening, was for an amount not to succeed, exceed, excuse me, $78,000. So I'll leave it to you for any questions.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pulling?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. On to Item 10C, Thank you, Ms. Dallas. On to Item 10C, Consider a motion waiving and/or adjusting permit fees for 90 days for repairs to property due to damage from Hurricane Delta. Mr. Knopf?
Yes, Sir, on January 26th, the council waived permit fees for repairs due to Hurricane Delta, and so that 90 days runs out, ran out yesterday, so we need some direction from the council, whether you want to extend it for another 90 days or, or end the permit fee waiver.
Let's, let's extend it another, I'll make a motion to extend it another 90 days to continue to help citizens in the community.
I'll second, yeah.
Can we have a motion and a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pulling?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Knopf. On to Item 10D, Consider a motion suspending Section 12.611, Subsection 11(c)(1) of the Code of Ordinances for 90 days to allow parking, use and occupancy in a recreational vehicle or travel trailer by a property owner due to Hurricane Delta, related damage to the inhabitable dwelling unit so as to make the dwelling unit uninhabitable. Mr. Knopf?
Yes, Sir, also on January 26th, the council waived the prohibition against living in an RV or travel trailer due, while the repairs to the home is being done as a result of Hurricane Delta, so we need some direction as to whether you want to extend that, waiving the ordinance requirement.
I'll make a motion to extend it.
Okay, motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pulling?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Knopf. On to Item 10E, Consider a motion authorizing a one-time reduction in the annual inter-fund transfer amount from the Water and Sewer Fund to the General Fund for administration[1618.21] to the General Fund for administration costs from two million and eight dollars, two million eight thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars to one million two hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. Ms. Zito.
Yeah, that was mouthful, huh?
Yeah, I know. I was like, I'm not used to saying two million, so sorry.
That, that interfund transfer is an annual thing we do. So the General Fund typically pays for the admin costs. They pay for city manager, they pay for finance, they pay for lots of things that is citywide. So we do it, we do transfers from the Water and Sewer to pay the General Fund back to kind of even out the expenses. However, as we discussed earlier on our budget amendments, Water and Sewer Fund is, had some unexpected expenditures right now with all their repairs that they've needed to do. And in prior, we've discussed this in prior meetings and we know that at some point, we're probably, we may have to raise our water rates to cover some of these unexpected expenses. But Council did task us with trying to find an alternative to raising the rates. This is our alternative. So if we reduce this interfund transfer, it'll help the Water and Sewer Fund. It'll help them have some more money, extra money for additional repairs. And will it hurt the General Fund? It will reduce our revenue. However, we had that grant earlier on for COVID. We, we got additional money that was unexpected. We applied for it, we got it, and it's in the reserves. So it won't take away from the General Fund. We're kind of using that money. This is our way to do it and help our Water and Sewer Fund. So we're just asking if y'all would like to make a motion for me to do this to reduce that interfund transfer to help the Water and Sewer Fund out.
Yes, I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion, too.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
So once again, if you, I don't know if the public really heard you, this is to protect the citizens and not increase the costs associated with the water bills and things of that nature. And we lowered taxes last year.
And we did lower taxes.
Wow, man, that's awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, onto item ten F, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the quarterly investment report for the period ending March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Ms. Zito.
Yes, so on page one thirty-eight, I believe, is our city's investment report for the quarter ending March thirty-first. This report just shows our cash and investments, which total thirty-six million. Our annualized rate of return is point oh-two, which obviously is not good. But like I mentioned before in the EDC meeting, the actual Treasury bill rate for the same time period was point oh-five. So everything is low right now. We use the Treasury bill as our benchmark, so we're pretty close to that. Wells Fargo is, I'm still working with Wells Fargo to try to increase our earnings and do better. I think with everybody working from home, they're a little slow helping me out right now. But I'm still, still working on them and trying to increase our earnings to do, see what we can do. But rest assured that all of our cash balances that are in the bank are fully collateralized.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. Onto item ten G, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the Orange Economic Development Corporation financial report for the quarter ending March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Ms. Zito.
Yes, this is the financial report for the EDC for the quarter ending March thirty-first that I presented earlier at the EDC board meeting.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item ten H, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the Orange Economic Development Corporation investment report for the quarter ending March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Ms. Zito.
Yes, this is the EDC's investment report for the quarter ending March thirty-first that was presented earlier at the EDC board meeting.
Make a motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
All right, so down to eleven reports, city manager report.
Mayor, Council, there will be a joint public hearing with the City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission next Tuesday, May the fourth, at five-thirty here in the City Council chambers. The public hearing is to receive comments concerning a proposed rezoning from R-one Low Density Residential Zoning District to R-three High Density Zoning District.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Coons. City Council report, starting at my right, Mr. Pullen?
No report.
Okay, Mr. Childs?
Mayor, I have no report.
Okay, Ms. Salter?
I have no report.
Okay, Ms. McKenna?
Go vote!
Oh, yeah.
That's my report.
But you got like forty-eight minutes left, huh? Ms. Henigan?
You can always vote Saturday if you can't vote today.
Yeah.
And come out to Depot Days and hear Paul sing-
Oh!
-on Saturday from ten to two.
Woo-hoo! Oh!
Okay, Mr. Burge?
Vote on Saturday. Yes, thank you.
Okay, in closing, before we do go to executive session, I just want to thank everyone for coming out again. It's awesome to see such a packed house. Thank you to all of those who godd have made a presentation. Thank you to Ms. Deana Hughes again for being as wonderful as you are. You do a lot for the community and we truly, truly appreciate you. We will go to a closed executive session, but rest assured, we're going to come back and finish some very important business. So you can hang out in the library and you can also hang out outside, but be careful for the mosquitoes. And if you haven't voted yet, you got forty-seven minutes. And they'll let you know when we reconvene in open session. Okay, adjourn to closed executive session deliberation with city attorney pursuant to chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code. Deliberation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five-five-one personnel matter, Assistant Municipal Judge. Okay? Enough anyway.
Y'all see, that's your problem. You can't get too many.
Good, I'd be like, I missed it. I missed it. That wasn't my fault.
Mayor, we're ready.
We're ready?
Y'all waited for me, thank you.
All right, so we will now reconvene in open session and we will take action as necessary regarding item twelve A from above. So we have consider a resolution to enter into an agreement with Jim Sharon Bearden Jr. as Assistant Municipal Judge of the City of Orange Municipal Court of Record for the period beginning April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, until September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, and authorizing payment in the amount of four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighteen cents per month to be paid on or before the fifteenth of each month for a period ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Mr. Coons?
Mayor, again, the selection committee for the Assistant Municipal Judge recommends that we enter into the agreement with Jim Sharon Bearden Jr.
Okay?
Make a motion?
Second.
I have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Childs? I almost skipped you. It's okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Childs? And Mr. Pullen?
Very gladly, aye.
All right.
Yes.
And so with that being said, motion is approved. Congratulations to you, Mr. Burge.
So now, and now we got some-
Before we, do you have to conduct the ceremony for newly appointed Assistant Municipal Judge?
Judge Pennington's here.
Swear, we're going to do it, Judge Pennington. Before you get started, I do wanted to say, we had a chance to just talk for just a second. This is an honor. I know I'm speaking for Council when I say that we are honored to have Mr. Bearden join us, join the family and join the team, to have someone that knows the community, that knows the people of the city of Orange. And we look forward to working with him and to Mr. Pennington, of course, until he's ready to lay it down for the golf clubs and things like that. But we are looking forward and we thank you and your family. And to you, Ms. Bearden, my wife, I know how my wife feels. So it's going to be a little bit rough, but we appreciate you too, okay? So thank you. And now let's do this oath of office.
All right.
My first time we got this last week to ask my daughter-
To give you her Bible, huh?
Did she like to read her Bible?
Awesome.
All right, that's wonderful.
You just stand right there and there you got the Bible. Somebody can hold the baby. You want somebody to hold it for you while you- You want your wife to hold it?
Or your daughter?
There we go, okay. Yeah. Oh, come on down.
Yeah, really. The going. We're all sitting here numb. We're just glad at the asset we achieved.
All right, good, good, good. And Mayor, I would just say that I personally consider your agreement with all of your remarks regarding Judge Bearden, and I'm glad that y'all made that decision. All right, it's time for you to take your oath of office. And I see you have the family Bible there with your hand and all that, which is good. If you'd raise your right hand, I'm going to break this up so we cannot stutter through it too much. When I say aye and pause, you can state your name and then we'll go forward. So, aye?
Aye.
Jim Sharon Bearden Jr.
Sharon Bearden Jr.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will faithfully execute-
That I will faithfully execute-
The duties of the office-
The duties of the office-
Of Associate Municipal Judge, City Court of Record-
Of the Associate Municipal Judge of the City of Orange Court of Record.
Of the state of Texas-
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my abilities-
And will to the best of my abilities-
Preserve, protect and defend-
Preserve, protect and defend-
The Constitution and laws-
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.